All for joining us here tonight. Normally, we would begin with public audience. What I wanted to ask is, is there anyone here who would like to speak on anything other than facilities and enrollment and the task force? Because I would welcome you to speak now, but we are going to have a presentation on that tonight, and I think it'd be more valuable for your public comment to follow that presentation, because I think that you would be interested in what that has to add to whatever it is you might want to say. So if that is okay with everyone, I would take public audience for anyone who would like to speak on anything other than facilities. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to Board and Administration of Communications. Josh.
Well, good evening, everyone. So I'm going to start off with tonight from Latimer Lane. So this past Wednesday, Latimer held their annual winter strings concert, and tonight, Latimer is hosting the biweekly Board of Education meeting. So hello, everyone.
Can you guys hear him? Just to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is the mic on?
These mics are not going to...
They're not for the room.
They're for the TV. They're for the television.
Okay, hello. So Latimer's also hosting their famous bingo night for the Latimer family on the 28th at 6:30. Over at Tooten Hills, this past week, Tooten celebrated the 100th day of school, and in honor of this special day, the kindergarten classes brought in 123 items to be donated to Project Outreach. So several of the students even dressed up like they were 100 to celebrate the day. Tooten will be hosting Reading Night this Thursday to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday and there will be therapy dogs. Author Koee Booth will be coming to meet with grades four, five, and six on March 26th. Ms. Booth wrote the former Nutmeg-nominated novel Kinda Like Brothers, and she has a wide variety of experiences, including mentoring teen writers. Over at Squadron Line, Squadron Line will be hosting their kindergarten orientation this Thursday, and in addition to discussing the program, all registration materials will be distributed and important information regarding the registration process will be addressed. Squadron is also collecting books for Read Across America Day from the Squadron family starting March 2nd, and these books will all be donated to Waterbury Reads. Over at Central, the After School Action Club is sponsoring Kindness Week, February 24th through 28th. Throughout the week, students will be making announcements and trying to spread kindness throughout the school. All classrooms will receive one bucket that they made, along with lots of little strips of paper that say kindness on them. The goal is to fill the bucket with kindness. Students are encouraged to wear their You Matter shirts, tie-dye shirts, or anything with bright colors this Friday to help wrap up the week. On March 2nd, Central will also be participating in Read Across America, and will sponsor a school-wide Read-a-thon. Every student is asked to collect pledges. No amount is too small, and the pledges will be based on the number of minutes each student reads. The entire school will be reading for 60 minutes that afternoon on March 2nd, and the money raised is split between a charity chosen by the students' class and the PTO board. Over at Terrafill, March 2nd will also be Terrafill's annual Stop, Drop, and Read Day from 10:30 to 10:50 in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday. At HGMS, HGMS is having an Awesome Spirit Week, including a Decade Day, Tie-Dye Day, and even Meme Day, where students are encouraged to dress up as their favorite internet memes. Last week, HGMS held their annual Lion Pride Celebration, where the diversity club read poetry, the cast of Anything Goes performed, and they watched a slideshow recapping the year so far. In addition, the Pep Band and United Sound performed throughout, and students competed in team-based, minute-to-win competitions to have fun. Over at Simsbury High School, where I currently am a senior, as we get closer to March and the month of fated college decision season, Simsbury High is offering more local and regional scholarships for seniors seeking secondary education next year, and for students who have overcome adversity or obstacles and have achieved success, who are also intending on enrolling in college in the fall. The Surveys for Facilities Master Plan meetings at the elementary schools over the course of this past month are providing feedback to help assess various planning options and develop revised options to present to the community at the Third Public Forum, which will be at the Auditorium at Simsbury High, March 4th at 7:00 p.m. So on behalf of Simsbury Schools, we thank you in advance for your help as we work forward to identifying the best plan for the future of the community, its schools, and the students we serve. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Josh.
You're welcome, Josh. Thank you.
Nothing to mention. Jen, Sharon?
Nothing.
Sharon?
I just want to make mention that we had a great opportunity for a couple of our teachers in Simsbury this summer. They got to go on, they did their tour of Europe and studied the history of the World War II. And Mr. Marchocchio, who's in the room right now, and Mr. Osborne, and they'll be speaking about their story, they'll tell us the tale of their trip and their travels Thursday at 6:30 at Simsbury Free Library. It's welcome to the public, all's welcome, and it should be really fun. I'm looking forward to hearing about all that they learned.
Great.
So it's kind of fun.
Mr. Tindall.
No, we'll get to my part later.
We'll get to you later. I just want to thank Josh for his comprehensive report. You told all my stories.
Just two pieces of information. The first is that this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. will be our first unified theater performance of the district at the high school. Again, the theme will be "March to the Beat of Your Own Drum." I will just ask that if you are going to attend from the Board that you also bring tissues, because it's usually a very emotional performance, but one I know our students are very excited to perform for you. And then the second bit of information is that on March 11th, the Town of Simsbury Spirit Council, which is the Town's Equity Group, along with our Community for Care, will be cosponsoring a workshop on implicit bias that will be taking place at the Simsbury Public Library in the Terrafill Room, and that starts at 6:30 p.m.
That's Wednesday, the 11th.
Wednesday, the 11th.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Obviously, as we took our board meeting on the road, I want to thank our partners at SCTV, who put in an effort to be able to televise this meeting tonight. So in particular, I want to thank Karen Handville, Mark Orinstine, who's a great volunteer who came earlier tonight to help set up, Michael Hunter for his assistance, and our custodians here at Latimer Lane, and our principal, Mike Luzetti, who helped set this all up. It looks like a snap, but it took a little bit of an effort, and really want to thank SCTV for being here tonight.
We all appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mr. Curtis?
Awesome.
You're all set. Okay. So now it looks like we're moving on to something that a few of you are interested in, the appointment of the Simsbury High School principal.
Great. So it's with great pleasure, I'm absolutely thrilled and really excited tonight to have an opportunity to recommend to the Board of Education that Mr. Steve Patrina, seated in the front row, be named as our next Simsbury High School principal. As you know, you had an opportunity to interview Steve a week ago. We had that same opportunity as an administrative team, and Steve just displayed excellence in every sense. And I just want to say that Steve has been in Simsbury a long time, and the group that has come out tonight is evidence of things that are important to Steve, right? We think about team and building teams, and we think about family, and both those things are incredibly important. Steve, when we went through this transition, Andy O'Brien taking a new position within the district, Steve came to me immediately and said, "Whatever you need." We didn't define what that was in the moment, but I knew that I had a partner that was going to stick with me, and we were going to figure this out in the short term while we planned for the long term. And in that time, Steve took the lead and took the reins. At a challenging point, we were initiating some very important equity work in the district, and we were launching a new strategic plan that the Board was rolling out. And one thing that I think Steve did incredibly well is he tied those two things together through the creation of what we call Passion Projects at Simsbury High School, and it really rebooted and revitalized the faculty and engaged students in a way that we needed. And I am thrilled that we're going to have an opportunity to work together and continue in that fashion in the future here, Steve, and you've done a great job. So I would, at this point, I'm just curious, how many people are here for Team Patrina?
It's a pretty good team you got there, Mr. Patrina.
Fascinating. I can tell you, I've done this a bunch of times in this district and never had more than one or two. So that's wonderful. But you've done a great job, and I know that you and your team are extremely excited to move the work forward and make this official, which is an important piece of the puzzle as we move forward throughout the next school year. So at this point, I would ask that the Board make a recommendation, and if you have any comments, this would be the time to do that as well.
Let me get a motion, and a second first, please.
I'll move that the Board of Education appoints Steve Patrina to the position of Simsbury High School principal effective February 26, 2020.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I think we're all really excited to have you work with us in this whole new adventure, and clearly you're bleeding blue and gold all over. And I think it's going to be a great match, so thank you for stepping up and taking the position. So do you want to say anything, Mr. Patrina?
Because you have a crowd. Oh, we have to vote, sorry. Wait, wait, wait. We gotta vote. I screwed up again. We gotta vote. All those in favor.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now.
I know you've done a lot of work, too. I am...
You need a mic.
Yep, you need a mic.
I thought I was... I'm truly humbled by this. I've put 30-plus years in at Simsbury High School, and I've always believed in doing my job. I've never asked much for recognition or accolades, but the outpouring of support over these last seven, eight months that since we've taken the leadership has just really been tremendous. Students, parents, and teachers, and you, all you people, it's really changed my outlook in terms of role and importance. I'll give one little thing, because I always gotta give one little thing. So when I was named Assistant Principal, you were on a traveling road show years ago, and I was appointed right here.
Wow.
Well, you've only been here twice.
They're important days.
But an important twice, right?
For those who don't know, I literally live 100 feet away, so...
Three kids came through here.
This school means a lot to our kids. So thank you for this opportunity, and we really look forward to carrying the blue and gold and the passionate pride off into the future here. Thank you.
Good luck.
So at that point, if you all want to leave, you're more than welcome to. Unless you want to applaud for the approval of the minutes.
Oh, then it's two bucks.
That is quite correct.
As Assistant Principals.
And all the principals were here, which was very nice.
That's great. That's great. If any of you want to move up, feel free. All right. So on to approval of the minutes from February 11th. Can I get a motion on that, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention, Tara. All right, thank you. Approval of the February 18th meeting minutes, please.
So moved?
A second.
Second.
No, you were there. This is the special meeting.
I was there. Oh, that was there, okay.
All those in favor? Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, all good. Okay. And now adoption of the non-public school budget.
Okay.
Mr. Curtis.
So at our last board meeting, we had an opportunity to present both the operating budget and the non-public school budget. So I have a motion put together this evening. Again, the increase in the non-public school budget is $4,951, and this portion of the budget, if you recall, really is services that we share with private schools, nurses, mileage reimbursement, field maintenance, some of those categories. So overall, it's about a half a million dollar budget. It's not a major line item, but I would ask that somebody make the motion to approve that budget, to move it on to the Board of Finance.
I'll move that the Board of Education adopt the 2020-21 non-public school budget in the amount of $551,383, which represents an increase of $4,951 or 0.91 percent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now the public school budget.
Okay, so there is one slight shift that has lifted the operating budget since the last time. It's up about $108,000, and that is due to just updated numbers that Amy Meriwether has put together on the insurance line item. So we've adjusted that, the Towns adjusted that in their budget. So the new increase of 2.27 percent overall includes that $108,000 increase in that line item. Everything else remains the same relative to what you looked at at the board shot in my presentation. We're well within, at this point, the guideline of the Board of Finance, that was 2.5 percent. And remember that the one piece we will need to discuss, and I talked to Maria, the Town Manager, as well, they're going to kind of structure that conversation the same way, is that pension assumption, and we will do that when we meet with the Board of Finance on the 10th. So that'll be consistent with the Town and the Board of Education. I know we said we could kind of approve that either way, but I would recommend that we make a motion to approve the 2.27 percent increase, because it's consistent with how we're going to move forward with our conversations with the Town and the Board of Finance.
Can I get a motion on the budget?
I'll make a motion to the Board of Education adopt the 2020-2021's budget, public school budget, in the amount of $72,493,061, which represents an increase of 2.27 percent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Anybody want to say anything?
I think we worked really hard. I think, I want to thank everybody, and I want to thank Amy, and I want to thank everybody who, and our executive council, who's done all this diligent work to get these numbers to where they need to be. Obviously, when we went into this, our static numbers were much higher, and we've made cuts, and we've found ways to make it 2.27, and I think it was a great job done by all, and all the board members and all the work we put in. I think, I think it's a very honest and respectful amount that we're putting forward.
Anyone else? All right, so vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I know them. Get me out.
Do it great.
Don't laugh at me. Cancellation of the March 10th meeting. So this one, I just would like to explain that we do have a public hearing as a Town on March 10th. We, as a Board, are presenting our budget to the Board of Finance that evening, so hopefully we'll see some people at that meeting.
That's not a public...
Oh, that's not public. Sorry, that's just our presentation to the Board of Finance.
But you're welcome to be there.
But you're always welcome to come.
Sure.
And you're the discussion. It can be very informative. So I need a motion to cancel our regularly scheduled meeting, because we will not be in the Board of Ed conference room that night.
I move to cancel the Board of Ed meeting on March 10th due to our, having our Board of Education presenting to the Board of Finance.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, information and reports. Mr. Sullivan, School Facilities?
Right to me. All right. Excellent. So this is the first time that the full Board will be taking up the Facilities and Enrollment Master Plan since our public forum at Henry James, and I just wanted to quickly say, you know, just because the full Board hasn't taken it up since that time, that's not to say a lot has not happened over the last few months. In response to the outpouring that came from the Terrafill community that night, we did ask TechTone to go back and draw up options that included, for each of the major options that they had, "Could you show us what it looked like in keeping all the schools open?" And let us consider that. So that was what happened in December, as TechTone regrouped. I will also note that we scheduled a smaller meeting with the Terrafill Village Association during the day, just to show that we were working on options like that. In January, we convened the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force after the holidays. Before that, I should say, we also met with the Board of Ed's Communications Committee to try to respond to making sure more of the community was aware of our study. One thing I think is really important, that in addition to the Terrafill community getting very engaged that night, that night helped the rest of the community become more engaged too in what we had done, and I think that's really important. But our Communications Committee met to talk about ways that we could continue to get information out, to open up avenues through some social media, through town resources to get more information out, and to look at a survey that we were going to put out that'll be part of tonight's presentation. After that, the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force met in late January to go over what the options were as they stood, and to help us, again, direct the survey that was going to go out. And at that point, we scheduled a series of neighborhood meetings, and we're going to talk about, over the last two and a half weeks, we have been to all five elementary districts to present, and in each case had excellent audiences, at least 30 parents and community members at every meeting, and some larger than that, to get a lot of feedback. So tonight, the goal of this presentation, let me say one other thing. You're getting my presentation tonight, because our partner, Jeff Wazinski from TechTone, he's been out so many nights for us, out presenting this. It's one night that Jeff was not available. But fortunately, I've been through it so many times that I can certainly answer any questions that the Board has. And I will also say, many Board members have been out at those neighborhood meetings. Susan and Jeff were at multiple neighborhood meetings, and we'll definitely be able to talk about what happened at those neighborhood meetings and review the surveys. So I'm going to proceed rapidly through this. This is our goal for tonight, to make sure that everybody understands what the current options are, to talk about what that feedback from the neighborhood meetings, and I'll also invite any of you who were at those neighborhood meetings who want to add anything to that. I will bring you through the survey results that we, our survey was open for about two and a half weeks. We had a very good response rate to our survey and interesting results that will be really revealed publicly for the first time tonight. And then just talk about the next steps moving forward, and that includes the next meeting of the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force tomorrow night. So no rest for the weary, we'll be back at it tomorrow night with Facilities and Enrollment. So this is just to show the professional team that has worked on this, and obviously really want to thank Jeff Wazinski for his leadership. He has been tremendous. I'm glad he got a night off tonight, because he's really helped lead this project for us. And then, of course, our other partners, most specifically, I work most closely with the folks from Mylone and McBroom on the demographic studies, but all the others, our engineers and other architects, certainly. We pulled this slide from Jeff's deck to show, you know, this, where we are now is, just to remind everybody, part of a much larger study that's been going on for 18 months, that started with the analysis of existing conditions and educational needs, that really started to help our maintenance and business office prioritize what needed the attention the most in terms of HVAC systems, and roofs, and doors, and windows, and bathrooms, and all of the things that need attention within a school, and the demographic projections that were a part of my piece of the study. And then last, is the long-range master plan for the community. That's the step we've been engaged in for the past six months, and where we're going to take this through, hopefully to have a choice on what our best first move is by this springtime. I mean, that's really the goal that the Board has outlined. So just one slide on the demographics, because I know most of our audience here is representing the elementary level now, and this is really to show that the two schools that are going to feel the greatest pinch of enrollment in the next few years are Squadron Line, which is the top line at over 100 students, from six, currently right at 600 students to over 700 students, and certainly our host school tonight, Latimer Lane, the yellow line that is currently at 445 students, but projected to go up to 550. In both cases, I'll have you note that the line goes up more quickly in the first half of that curve than it does the second half of that curve. So we know that the students are coming within the next four to five years in terms of what the demographics are telling us, of where we're going to feel the pressure on our current facilities, and can speak a little bit more about that. Certainly, the bottom line represents Terrafill School, which will be the one remaining the most steady if demographic trends continue, and more modest increases, but ones we still have to account for at Tooten and Central School. So that's important to consider. The options, I'm going to go very quickly. The options are really the same as TechTone presented at the public forum, with the exception that each of them has a sub-option that shows that each of the five schools could remain open if you planned it that way. And so, again, one of the things that I've said is, as tremendous as that night from the volume of people that came out from Terrafill that night, if, the one part of it that I wish we had been able to hear more of, and I'm sure you do as a Board, is more opinions of what people thought of the 5-6 school and the sixth grade model to Henry James, and there was not as much conversation about that. And I think that's where we really need to shift to the conversation, of what model really makes the best sense. So first, the first option was the new 5-6 school. I'm going to say what Jeff has repeated at the last few neighborhood meetings. Because it's number one, it is not our first choice. It is simply number one, and that was definitely confusing for some people in our neighborhood meetings, almost like this was the endorsed choice of the Board.
Can we change it to A?
Yeah. Well, the problem is that the options have As and Bs, so...
They can be ones and twos.
So it's simply the new 5-6 option, which is creating a fifth and sixth grade building, and we've talked about it primarily on the Henry James campus. What you will see here is TechTone's demonstration of, if you went ahead with that as your best first move, a fifth and sixth grade school, you would then have the ability over time to look at, well, what would happen if you left three of your elementary schools open, having pulled fifth and sixth grade out? What would happen if you left four of them open, and what would happen if you left all five? In the option for three, you're basically taking about 15, a little over 1,600 students, and so there would be three schools of approximately 545 students, rather large elementary schools. If you went with the option that four of the five remained open, there would be a little over 400 students in each school. So in each case, this was a rounded, this was an equalized number to show what would happen if you divided that population out. On the last, where TechTone is showing keeping all five of the buildings open, it's not redistricting them. It's showing if you just pulled the fifth and sixth grade out of the existing district boundaries, that's how many students would be left under option C. And as we've discussed, certainly of the options that are out there, this is probably the one that would put the greatest pressure on closing a school, because some of these numbers start to get small enough that you would really, you know, probably economically for us, not to mention the sell to the community and the Board of Finance, would be rather challenging at that point. But that is the 5-6 option, and as TechTone has shown throughout, the test fit for this, it's not that that would be the building, but this was one way to demonstrate that it could fit realistically on the Henry James campus. That would represent a two-story building adjacent to the current Henry James with a reconfiguration of the fields. So that was the first option. Again, reimagine to say, "Could you show us that option with all five schools staying open?" Because our November presentation of this did not have column C. This added column C to option one. Option two, which is adding the sixth grade addition to Henry James, is fairly simple to understand in that it's simply adding one additional wing onto Henry James that will... Henry James that we'll show you visually in a moment. And this is from the what what each of the schools looks like. You can see taking the current Henry James and proposing it be a sixth through eighth grade school. What that number in the middle shows you is at the height of population, based on the highest demographics, the the school with three grades would reach a little over 1,100 students in population. If you did that and then said, take the rest of the now K through five students, and we actually are showing the possibility that one of the things you could also do is start to consider preschool in more than one building. And that's why this is presented like that. But if you did that and equalized the populations, you'd have about 16, let me do this right, about 2,000 students to divide. And that would remain, if it was four elementary schools, it would be about exactly 500 students per remaining elementary school. And option B shows you keeping all five elementaries open with a sixth grade model, in which case your equalized elementary schools end up being about 400 students. Throughout these presentations, we've talked about, well, are you saying it would be either exactly 500 or exactly 400? There's probably no way we would divide the district boundaries that way. It would probably be a little bit in between that, you know, so that you wouldn't have anything as large as Squadron is now, or anything as small as Terrifil is now, that you would you would try to get an equalized, a more equalized, not a perfectly equalized division of the students, is I think probably the best way to put that. So again, I'll point to one other column, the last column. And what Techton is advising the community is, as each of these projects could potentially come up in front of the community, that they believe it's important for us to look at both options based on state reimbursement, to both, we've shown options where each of these projects could be a completely new building on the same campus, or RAN stands for renovate as new, in which case you keep a little more than half of the existing building, and then add on and maybe demolish an older wing. And that's renovate as new comes with greater state reimbursement than new construction does. So there are some financial benefits to looking at renovate as new each time you were to do a project, if you felt like the core spaces were were spaces that you could work with, and either reimagine as they are or convert. So, you know, just because this is a cafeteria now, it's not to say it couldn't be reimagined as a library media space. You know, that's the type of thing that a renovate as new might might do. I targeted that one to the Latimer community, so.
Neil, before you move on.
Sure.
Out of the 400 students that move, well, I guess that's the sixth grade, right? The I'm looking at the Henry James 735 to, do we know how that's distributed among the well, among the elementary schools?
How big each sixth grade is?
So how much of the 400 is coming from Terrifil Squadron?
Oh, yeah, I definitely know how much of that, yeah. How many, I mean, you're just pulling sixth grade out of each school, so you're pulling
Two sections.
But we know that for the 255, because that was the 2029 number, wasn't it?
Yes. So if you're, yeah, you're right, we should probably be pulling some numbers out of there now that, not on the five elementary school. Well, yeah, on the five, yeah, you're right, that number probably needs a closer look.
Right.
What are you saying?
Well, I just
You're saying that the
Terrifil is not going from 255 to 400, it's really maybe going from
Yeah.
200 to 400, because some of those, some of those 255 are already
220 should take out the sixth grade.
Right, right, right. Okay, I see what you're saying. So that projected enrollment number you want to see less the sixth grade.
Right. Now, he's not showing you that if you kept current boundaries. So what he's telling you is if you pull sixth grade out
You're redistricting.
You will have 2,000 remaining students in K through five.
Right.
That's what he's saying.
Right, okay.
But that's an interesting way to look at it as well.
Right, if we kept, if we kept the districts, if we kept the districts the same, there would be like a column C.
No, but it's got to be bigger than it is now.
Todd, if we kept the districts the same, there would need to be a column C that matched this one.
Right, right.
And we don't currently show that for option two, which is not to say we couldn't show that for option two, we could. And that's part of, you know, the next iteration of this.
Yeah, because I just wondered, do they all have to be the same size?
They don't. I think the point of that was to just try to say, if we're trying to not have, if we're trying to be more equitable in the schooling and not have these big, outlying elementary schools with a large enrollment, this is what we would have to do. But knowing Terrifil can't handle 400 kids, we would make
Right.
small adjustments as we went through a redistricting
Right.
to reflect the building they're going to.
Right, but I don't want to do an unnatural districting just to make sure it's equal and the district should make sense.
Right, right.
Right. Okay, so just to again, show that this one's probably a little more than a test fit, because pretty much this has been looked at before, of how would you logically do a sixth grade addition onto the current Henry James, and it's represented by the the yellow that you see on the northern part of the of the current building, which would be imagined as sort of a largely separate sixth grade neighborhood or pod, not completely separate from the rest of the building, because obviously you could get there, but that students' classrooms would primarily happen almost entirely within that wing of the building, so that you could transition sixth graders to Henry James, kind of keep them together in that that area of the building, and then transition them in seventh grade into the, of course, they would use the cafeteria, the gym spaces, the other, there are other parts of the building they would share, but the large part of their day would be in that wing. It also talks about a small addition to the cafeteria, because you would have to expand that current facility. So that is shown, if you know where the cafeteria is, kind of down on the the middle part of the school as shown on the graphic. Here's just another look at it. So the cafeteria addition would be that second smaller rectangle of purple that you see on there.
And that would facilitate a third lunch wave.
Right. Techton is imagining that purple main wing to be a two-story addition that would connect what is the current north end of the building to what is the tech ed and family consumer science wing as a as a connector, and sixth grade pod. So that's option two. And then option three is what we're simply calling elementary renewal, taking all five of our elementary schools and prioritizing which ones need attention first, and then over a period of 20 years or longer, making sure each of those buildings gets a comprehensive either renovation or a look at a new school. So in this model, you could see here that each of the buildings is imagined under 3A if you don't redistrict them. And again, we show that the possibilities would exist to add pre-K into more of the schools, not necessarily all six, but probably beyond where it is now, which is only Squadron Line. And I will point out that at various times in the preschool has been in other buildings. It's been at Central School, it's been in Tooton Hills. So that would not be unusual practice for us to have preschool in other places. So 3A shows you what's the highest K6 population that school reaches over the next five to six years, really. And then 3B says, are you interested in equalizing them? And if you did that for K6, you're looking at about 480 times five, which is more like 2,400 students, that would have to be divided between your your four, your five elementary schools, excuse me. And again, saying, any combination of those five schools could be a renovate as new or a new. I will say that the first two are listed as the first two, because it's the belief that they probably need the most attention in terms of the demographic pinch that's coming. Certainly, Latimer Lane being the first priority, I think, from us for, as we look at it demographically and also facility-wise, that Latimer Lane rises to the top of the list. Squadron, certainly an important consideration. And then the last three are really not so much in a priority order at all.
And Neil, again, it can be, doesn't have to be equalized. We could look at different models and different sizes within there.
Right, right. So that's option three. We also added this after the public forum, because there was some really important public commentary, that if you don't do any of these three options, that doesn't mean there's no cost. That that simply maintaining elementary schools that average 75 years in age as a status quo, you're going to have to put some money into older mechanical systems, certainly some core spaces that have dated badly. And so what Techton is trying to show there is that there are, that in the short term, if you didn't do any of the options, we would certainly be adding modular classrooms to Latimer soon, to try to address the population increase that's coming here, and maybe looking to take some students from a soon-to-be overcrowded squadron and move them to another school. And then go about targeted phased remodeling of the schools where you can do it. Of course, much harder to do in occupied buildings. So if you're not emptying out a building or adding a wing to a building that then gives you swing space, this is, over a long period of time, fairly difficult to attack. And this is sort of how we've done our capital improvement plan for a while, and at times that has been fairly frustrating for the board. So
I mean, there would have to be a different mechanism with the Board of Finance and with the town, if you were going to try to expand this in any realistic way. Can't be how we do it now.
So not counting this as a new option, but it is important to have on there. What would what would be the three options that we look at? The first one, a new 5-6 school as the first step in a long-range plan. Number two, a sixth grade addition, and Techton recommending coupling that at the same time with probably, for purposes of cost, a renovation as new at Latimer, where you would add a wing on here that would give you swing space to move students into while you renovated the rest of the building. And then option three, if you decide to not do a sixth grade wing, getting a shovel in the ground as soon as you can to address some of the issues that exist at Latimer Lane right now. Two dollar figures under each option. The top option representing total cost of the project, that's the number that referendum would have to approve, that, well, you would have to approve, the Board of Finance would have to approve, and then referendum would have to approve. But within that, a discussion for the town that the after state reimbursement, the cost to the town is the lower number. So and it's funny, because renovations as new get a greater state reimbursement, you could start to see this a little bit, that number one is a total cost of 65 million with a reimbursement of around 52. But option two has a bigger top price tag, slightly, of 66 million, but a lower cost to the town at 49 million. So it's it's all options that as we got into a design phase, that Techton would have to be walking us through if we if we chose these options.
Is this option one, three schools, four schools, or five schools?
It's not, it's not determining that. This is, this slide is trying to say
Just the building, the 5-6 school.
Five six.
That is doing nothing to any other building, building a 5-6 school.
Because that's what you would vote on.
That's number one.
So that's why he's tried, he's added this big step one only on the side, on the side here, to try to say, and we'll get to that, because here's what this looks like, and we had a lot of talk about this at the neighborhood meetings. So the first timeline that you show is, realistically, if we approved a referendum next year, if we had our community discussions, went to the Board of Finance, got approval to get a referendum out there, and approved it in 2021, you would have a phase after it got approved of pre-construction, which is your design phase, assuming that it has passed referendum and gone to the state to get on the priority list. And then you would spend the latter part of 2022, and then 2023, and the early part of 2024 in construction mode, to get something open for the start of the school year in 2024. So all of these kind of contemplate a four-and-a-half-year look at a project from soup to nuts. And throughout the presentations, Jeff has been showing us this. So really important for the community to understand that therefore, if we were going to address all of our aging facilities, there's no way the town could take on that kind of debt without spacing it out over a period of some 20 years. So if you can't read the dates at the top of that slide, and I'm sure the screen is far enough away from people in our audience, the last date on this actually goes all the way out to 2039. This is saying, how could you accomplish four projects in 20 years? And address your facilities in that way. So that's kind of where we are, and I want to be able to transition to the feedback we got from the neighborhood meetings, but I'll pause to see if anybody's got any questions where we are. Okay. So looking at the feedback we got from our neighborhood meetings, our order, our order of events, we started at Tooton Hill School a few weeks ago, came out to Latimer Lane for a morning meeting. We also had a morning meeting at Squadron Line, and then two evening meetings at Central and Terrifil. I think word got out to our faculty of how interesting our neighborhood meetings were, because we actually had pretty good teacher representation at the last two, Central and Terrifil. By that time, the teachers had decided to come out and hear more and contribute more to the discussion. So I would say, if you look at the top couple of bullets on this, one of the things that we heard is we talked about, because Jeff comes at this from an architectural standpoint, right? He's going to talk to you about the demographics, and this is what we can do for buildings. And many parents said, what we want to hear more about, if any of these options are viable, is what are the educational reasons we would be doing this? Talk to us about what are the advantages of a fifth and sixth grade school, or a sixth grade wing added on to Henry James. And I think that is something that we do, we do need to do a better job of moving forward, of articulating exactly what the educational benefits of any of these options are. Certainly, a lot of questions about what other communities are doing for grade structure, but the answer to that is they're doing both of these things. I mean, we certainly know that Farmington and Avon have now had about 20 years of successful 5-6 schools, but other neighbors of ours, Granby and West Hartford, have had successful 6-8 schools. So there's no direct right answer to this question. And in fact, we're collecting a lot of information about the configurations, and we probably see more 6-8 than anything else at this point. At Latimer, I'll speak to the Latimer audience that has arrived. We heard a lot of, thank you, these plans are interesting, we need help now. We're crowded now, and we would like to sort of be able to know sooner what your plans are to help with some of our overcrowded cohorts. And there was definitely some concern that the first time Latimer could feel real relief would be four years from now. And that's short of, short of some temporary modulators, that we could, we could provide relief that way. But and then certainly feedback from a number of the neighborhood meetings, that including strongly at Terrifil, if any of these options realistically left us without five elementary schools, not only do I not want my school closed, I don't want any of the schools to close, like that. So not wanting to support anything where potentially a school might close.
We heard that loud and clear at Tooton as well.
Yeah, yeah. Some interesting questions about if something did close, what happens to the vacant building? You know, is it reimagined as, you know, administrative offices, or community center, or what else? Comments about not, that in this study, you can't separate the aging conditions of the building with the demographic push that's coming, that therefore those two things combined need us, are forcing us to make a choice soon over what to do. There were a lot of questions. People, I don't know whether I could support a five and sixth grade school. Is my fifth grader going to be on the bus with high school kids? Because that would horrify me, and I don't want that. And so I could never support that option if that was the case. Came back to our start time study, what would the start times of the school, they were times of the school? They were not questions we were prepared to answer, but we were glad they were being asked, because they showed what's on people's mind. There were some concerns about younger kids being with older influences. Questions about when we looked at a fifth and sixth-grade school before, a different model in that we looked at that fifth and sixth-grade option up at the current Squadron Line school, and that was a good 10, 12 years ago that we looked at that option. We had a few audience members who expressed their strong belief in K6 structure, told us that's why they moved to town. And there were questions about why are you, you know, why are you trying to equalize the populations? And, you know, that's where we talked about, they don't have to be perfectly equalized, but we just want to show you what those options are. And then the last slide about the feedback, questions about getting the teachers more involved in the conversation. We plan to do that over the next, certainly we've been involved with some teacher discussions, we need to do more. That status quo option of number four of doing nothing doesn't mean no cost, and we really heard that loud and clear at a couple of our neighborhood meetings, that other, in other presentations, that really has to be emphasized, that, that there are going to be costs whether we choose a new option or not. Concerns about the capacity of core spaces, particularly here at Latimer, again, they talked about having an all-school gathering in the blue gymatorium that you saw next door, and having all the kids on the ground, and at the current population, it's already a little scary, and what does that look like if we have more kids? And then some comments about the multi-housing unit, that, multi-unit housing that has come into town in more recent years. And a kind of positive comment about, it was a Squadron Line mom who said, the importance of having preschool in your homeschool. Like, it's, it's a very nice transition for the littlest ones to know that, and that would be nice for more schools than just Squadron. So, you know, we, that's a summary of a lot of feedback that we got at five meetings. Many of you were at those meetings. I don't know if anybody wants to comment at this point about our roadshow for the neighborhood meetings.
I thought the feedback that I heard, I was at Tooten, Latimer, and Central. And, you know, the conversations were varied and really interesting, and there is a lot of concern about the educational benefits. There is a lot of concern, particularly at Latimer, about the stress of the building and having so many people in it, and just the crowding in general. You know, we heard a little bit on the tour we took, that it's hard to get through lunch if you're buying. It's hard to have time to eat, because it's just a finite amount of space. You know, we saw for ourselves some of the rooms and deficiencies here. So it was a common theme from the parents that came to that meeting. I think it's important to note, just in some of the feedback, I'm just thinking out loud, that we probably should have a slide that tells people what the makeup of the facilities and enrollment task force is, because we do have teachers on there.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that might be a-
That's a good point.
-good addition. Jeff?
No, I just think, so I went to three out of the five schools. I was traveling unfortunately for work, so I had to miss two. And, you know, there's those moments when you're like, you're really proud of your community. I mean, they were great discussions, respectful, you know, had, as Neil pointed out, very different points of view depending on your school. But the, but the conversation was very thoughtful, and was, it was just really great. I, I think there was two themes even within that list that came out in those discussions. One was keep our neighborhood schools, and to the extent that Neil mentioned. What was really refreshing to me was the comments of whatever, you know, a Squadron parent saying, you know, I don't want any schools closed. And, and God forbid, if we have to do that, I want to handle those people with respect and, and just treat them well, which I thought was incredibly well. The second, the second, I thought, consistent theme was just utter opposition to the five-six. There's just not support out there, if you ask me. And I think we'll get to the, some more of that later, but I thought there was two, two very clear consistence. But overall, it was incredibly encouraging discussion, I thought, out there. Again, we all didn't agree all the time, and, you know, it got heated and emotional at times, and you know what? It should. Look at those numbers. Look at what we're talking about. It should get emotional, and, and people should be going back and forth. But I think that that diversity of opinion makes for a much better product at the end of the day. So I, again, I thought the whole process would work very well.
But I would, and I would just like to add on to that, that it wasn't, at the meetings I were, I was at, there were always some people who were not school-aged parents. We did have community members who joined in at some of those meetings. And I think that's important to note, because we've been working pretty hard to make sure we don't just talk to the school community, because I've said it a thousand times, and anybody who's been to a meeting I've been at, it's a community decision. Many of the people who are showing up at these meetings, their kids will be done with elementary school before we open a door. So, we need to make sure the whole community is moving forward together, and that is something we all can make our peace with.
All right. I'm going to transition it to the survey results. So we put our survey out there during February, and want to show you the response that we got. We have about 370 certified faculty members, 200, roughly 250 responses is a good, very good response rate on surveys that we put out. In the community, almost 1,200 responses that we got. And because we did make an effort to use the Town List Serve and our Facebook page and had people forwarding it, I do think this is a mix of parents and community members who took our survey. And to borrow from Susan's point, that's important. So, I want to start with the staff results, because they're actually a little more stark in terms of what the opinion was. And you, we, I picked five questions from each, our survey consisted at about 11 and 12. I picked five key questions off of each survey to show tonight. And it starts by asking, would they support one of the models? Would you support a sixth-grade wing? Would you support a fifth or sixth-grade school? And so we'll start here of would you, so faculty members, would you support a sixth-grade addition to Henry James? And if you know anything about surveying, anytime you get 80/20 in terms of a response, it's pretty significant. So, here are faculty members and they're K, they're K-12 faculty members. So this is not narrowed down to, to, you know, only the audience in that portion of schooling. But it is very significant that 80% of our faculty are answering that they would support a sixth-grade addition. When you ask the same question about the fifth and sixth-grade school, it's still in favor, but it drops. And you could see our faculty much more as like a 60/40 split, still could support the idea. Remember, the question is, would you support? But, you know, if we go back, it's high support there, certainly still strong support, but less with the five-six school. We then asked both staff and community members about a ranking of what their options were. And this chart demonstrates where that ranking stood. So the first pod of those is existing structure. And you could see that over half of the faculty members who answered the question are citing existing structure as their third choice out of the three. And when you look at the middle option, that's the five-six school, and the strongest favorable option becomes the sixth-grade option, which would support sort of the other way we asked the question a minute ago. Okay? We then had some other questions in the survey. We sort of asked the question a third way, and it was this, where do you believe the most effective location is for grade six? And again, for staff, you're less than 18%, consistent with the other number. You know, you're asking these questions slightly differently, but getting consistent responses, that that small a number believes that where it is now is the most effective structure. And we can get into all sorts of reasons for why that is. But if you put out a survey, that's what you, what you got from our faculty. It's different for our community members, but still shows some support. I think the options lined out are pretty clear. This, this is the last staff question before I transition, sorry. In planning for improvements to the physical condition of the schools, what would you rather see? Additions and renovations, a new school, or it doesn't matter? We asked that question because the idea of a new school would be, like, if you built a new school on the same site, there's no disruption to us. You go build it, and we move in. And we thought that might be really particularly appealing. That didn't prove to be the case, that it was, the answer was much more like, it doesn't matter to us, whatever meets the needs clearly became the, the choice, you know? And we're proving that while there are disruptions, we're getting it done at Henry James right now. Like, you can make it work. So, transitioning now to the community survey, asked the same question, would you support a sixth-grade addition? This one much more 50/50, but slightly the majority, 55 to 45, saying we would, we could support a sixth-grade addition to Henry James Memorial School. If that's the option that the board pursued, that roughly a little more than half of your parents could support it. When you ask that same question about fifth and sixth grade, you drop well below half. And so you could see just a little over a third of the respondents are saying that that is an option that they would support as community members. The ranking system supports those two answers. You could see that the community members rank existing structure as the top choice, with slightly more than half of respondents answering that way. The middle option is, is saying that's their third choice. And, you know, your first and second choice added together in option two, kind of support that notion that this is probably like about a half, about half the people would be. You know, I think it's interesting to combine it with the demographics. Like, you know, if you ask the question slightly differently, if I ask Latimer Lane families, would you support a sixth-grade addition if it meant your building would no longer be overcrowded? That's a different question that you have, right? I mean, it's, it's a lot in how you ask questions. And, you know, it's just different ways to think about the structures that we could, we could put out there. When, this way, what's the most effective location? Again, it's a match. You have a little, less than half of people saying the elementary school is the most effective option, a full third thinking that the sixth grade to the middle school is the best option for sixth grade, and then about a little less than 20% supporting the fifth and sixth grade model. And then the last question for them, instead of asking about new or renovation, we asked about cost impact. And you could see, would you support a long-range capital improvement? The middle answer, of course, draws the most fire there in that it needs to be a phased approach, but yes, I could support it, you know? And this is where we're kind of getting at, that idea of a, of a 20-year plan, not, not a massive tax bill hitting on anybody. So, that is kind of where we're at with our survey. Again, the facilities and, two meetings that I do want to note, facilities and enrollment is tomorrow night. We will be looking at some of the same data and additional demographics. And then, of course, our next public forum that we need to plan for, which is a week from Wednesday. So, that's what I have for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
But I think I'd like, Jeff, if you could just talk about some of the work at the facilities.
Yeah, as Neil mentioned, we have a meeting tomorrow, and then we've got the public forum, with the ultimate goal of getting really a real focused decision plan in the spring, because this is a long-range plan, but as Neil said, even if we enacted and the public voted on something today, that shovel's not going in the ground for 18 months, two years. And I am extremely concerned with this school in particular and Squadron, and where we're heading. So I, I would like to propose something for, starting with tomorrow's meeting, quite honestly, with these options. As I mentioned, the five-six, and I think the survey results bore it out, the comments certainly bore it out, I just don't think that there's, there's support there. So, I would like the board's impressions of just, can we take that off the table? It is time, I'm not sure, it is causing too much anxiety in the community. And quite frankly, it's wasting our time if the results are what the results are. Let's, let's focus our energy on where it needs to be and move forward that way.
I totally agree with Jeff. I think that the meetings I have been at, the, as soon as you start talking about the five-school, five-six school, and the demographics associated with it, you really see that our fiduciary responsibility dictates we would have to close at least a school. And that's where we, it becomes a non-starter for people. The community very much likes their five elementary schools. And if we can still do our financial duty to the town and maintain the five schools, I think that's sort of where we have to head to.
I was only at one, Terriffill one, because I am a parent of Terriffill. But I, I think that five-six has to be taken off. I think that people get so closed-minded, and they can't hear anything else because they're so on the defensive. And I think if you take that out, at least for that March 4th meeting, I think maybe you'll have a more productive conversation.
I think as well, I think even for tomorrow's meeting, it could come off, because I think people have heard it enough that we don't even need to waste time on it. I think we're spending a lot of time talking about something that's not even an option to most people anymore. And I think the quicker we take it off, the quicker we can get to, now how do we address six and what needs to be done? That's my recommendation.
I have just two questions, and I don't know if this will come up in tomorrow's, that facilities task force meeting, but like, will they have, one, would there be like another survey that's going to go out once this is off? And then, two, is there any way to put together a presentation about the educational reasons as to why six should move? I think, because people are really asking that a lot.
So, let me take a stab at that. So my, my take on that is if we can narrow the options-
Yeah.
-then our conversation is much more focused tomorrow evening. And we can then frame, you know, as we plan for that public hearing, I think a part of that presentation needs to be exactly what you say, in a balanced way.
Yeah.
You know, both what some research says, what our educators are saying. We put our educators, our leaders last week through an exercise to really get their input on what they saw as the values or the drawbacks. And I think that would have to be a focus to kind of teach in presentation at that hearing, so then we could get feedback on that. But, you know, I agree as well, there's too many, too many balls in the air right now to allow us to get there. And it's, you know, our charge was to think about this long-range plan, and one of the byproducts of it is the tail end of the plan is getting in the way of our ability to really focus on the immediate need, which I think we all believe we have to get to in the spring. So I think what people are saying to me really makes a great deal of sense in our ability to really move forward productively.
So, you know, I, I mean, I keep hearing us talk about the spring. I, you know, with me, I look at it and say, I think we all agree about the fifth-six coming off, and we can really focus on six. But if we look at it and say that where we're sitting today needs relief, I think there's another conversation that needs to happen as an interim to give relief to where we're sitting today. And if, you know, to me, if that's modulators, while we continue to do the rest, I think we also should consider that.
And I think that's part of, part of the conversation has been, if we have a direction by the end of this school year, as to whether we're going to maybe move the sixth grade, or we're going to remain the same, if we're going to remain the same, then the conversation would maybe be to redistrict. If we're going to do something with a sixth-grade wing, then maybe we bring modulators in, because you don't want to redistrict more than once. So I think those are definitely things in play that we, as we, as we try to get to a decision, we need, like, that's sort of a chicken in the, like, we got to get to one decision to make the next.
Yeah.
But we absolutely have to plan for something here.
But Sharon, you're right, the, that's part of the discussion, right? There's the immediate need and then the long-term, but that's just, that's absolutely part of the, part of the conversation.
I mean, you have the max, the max capacity- I mean, you have the max capacity of one more summer if everything falls right before you have to do something different in this building, correct?
I'm watching second grade really closely. First to second grade really closely.
We need to plan in place. The point of this whole, what we're going through right now, I think has been great. We've gotten a lot more public feedback than we have gotten on any other subject in a very long time. And it really is wonderful, and I think it really makes what we do so much easier because listening to people and doing what the town feels is right in, as a whole, is so much, so important to what we do and so much easier for us to know what people are actually thinking. And these conversations have been very, as you say, emotional and real and honest and sincere, and I think that, but the bottom line is, we put together the survey for one reason, to make a long-term plan, because in the past, we, we Band-Aid things, we Band-Aid things, and then we have a study and we realize, wait, you know what? We've been doing it a long time, and we need, these are public buildings, they're town buildings, they're used by everybody in town, not just our students, our students are primary inhabitants, but they're important to our town, they're important to everything about our town. So the conversation has been really, I don't think we're dismissing anything by saying, okay, we're at a new stage, we think that we've heard the people, we've heard from research, we've heard from surveys, the five, six, I think we should take it off the table and keep the conversation going because our ultimate goal, we can't lose the goal of trying to have a long-term plan, because the long-term plan needs to be tied up in a bow and what everybody wants and helpful, so that we all can make a plan and our town can be, we can be fiscally responsible in all the plans going forward. We are, we know that we've got needs coming quicker than the plan will be able to put them in place, but once the plan's in place, we'll be able to understand how to do immediate reaction to help schools that need some, some, some freedom and movement.
Hey, Tara, I appreciate that. And that's why, sort of the second ask of you all tonight is, I would like to take that fourth option off, right? Because it's not really an option, right? It's, it's, it's not, it's not even standard operating procedure, right? And as Matt said, we're not going to be able to do it the way we're doing it today anyways. So let's, let's, I, I think that's, it's hiding the ball a little bit by even putting it up there. So I would like to give the facilities enrollment task force tomorrow the fewest amount of options possible, and if we took, I guess it would be one and four off, it comes to them with two options. Both, maintain all five schools. That's important to say. And the only difference of the two options would be what do you do with sixth grade?
Right. So those are the only, those are the two?
That's, that's what my recommendation would be.
Can I just, I need to take a step back for a second, and maybe I missed this, I'm sure I missed this along the way, but the facility enrollment task, task force is made up of community members, teachers, multiple boards. I'm confused about roles and responsibilities and timing. So who's the ultimate decision maker on this?
We are.
We are.
The Board of Ed is.
So the, the task force is to.
Make a recommendation.
Okay. And the timing of this is?
So we would.
I mean, the ideal timing.
So we would like to have the Board of Ed approve at a minimum what option, you know, the first play and the option is in the spring. That timeline would allow us to spend the fall of next year and through the budget process, get an architect on board officially, start making presentations to the different schools, and start moving momentum towards a referendum for the first project next year.
May of 21.
You also have to talk conversations with the state.
The other piece of that, and I can't leave out, is that the Board of Finance is patiently waiting for when these options are created so they can start running modeling scenarios to see what tax impacts are. So in our last facilities enrollment task force meeting, there was really an ask to do what we're trying to do tonight. Like, you tell us, our job is not going to be to tell you whether a five, six is better than a six, you tell us what direction you want to go in, we can help you with the brainstorming and the planning for how we want to get this input and feedback moving forward.
I guess, and to address Jeff's question, I guess my bad for not being at the task force meetings and understanding this more, but I don't feel like from these couple of presentations that we've gotten, not that they have been good presentations, I don't feel like they've gotten into the detail. And at some point between now and the spring, I would hope we get some, maybe a separate workshop or really get, I mean, a good block of time through it. I agree with everybody else about the five, six. I would like to hear other people's thoughts on option four because I'm not, I don't.
Are we clear on what four is? So, okay.
I think that needs more explanation.
So for, option four, those are outcomes of what option four? Option four is how we operate right now. Every year, I come before the Board of Ed and I say, okay, we have X number of dollars available in the debt policy, we would like to address lockers or address bathrooms. It's not big dollars, it's inconsistent, and it bounces back and forth between the team. What Jeff is saying, these are some of the immediate needs that we have if we were going to continue to do business the way we do business now. And my, my point on that, at least my feedback to the board on that is, the needs that have been identified by Tecton in this study are so significant, we would be doing this for 200 years in the current way that we.
Without really getting.
The way we bond. Now, if we bonded different and we had a different structure with the Board of Finance, you could take off larger chunks, but.
Okay. But none of that gets at even the core spaces. Like, we heard how insufficient the gym and the cafeteria are in this building now, and we saw the art room. It doesn't address any of that.
Because maybe that's the wrong list.
But that's the necessary list, so the roof doesn't leak and the windows don't break, and the, but that's the necessity.
And that's, and I think that's what I was trying to get at before, is why we even hired to do a study in the first place. It was because the Board of Finance and ourselves are struggling with this long, you know, $700 on a boiler, $2 million on a roof, you know, 4,500 bucks on, on, you know. But I'm like, we have been doing those little bits for a long time, and it's just Band-Aids, and it's not solving the true problem. And these, again, are buildings that are town buildings used by everybody. So that's why we have the study going on. No, I'm just saying, so option four is not an option, because that would be doing things the same way, which means we did a survey for naught, and I'm, we worked too hard to have it end this back at the beginning.
Option four was added in because at some of these meetings we have heard, what if we do nothing, what, like, then it's free, and it's not, and we're trying to make.
But option four was not presented at any of the town.
No, no. This is just.
This was the feedback on those.
Can I say three again?
I'm sorry.
Let me put up three again.
I can.
But I would be very frustrated if we kept with four.
Three is the renewal of the buildings.
The renewal of all the.
Three is discussing new builds and renovations for your current elementary.
Two and three.
Three renovations.
With, with the advice of Tecton, that certainly priorities one and two are Latimer and Squadron. And then there's debate after that about what direction you, the town would need to go.
I have said it, I've been on the board since 2007, and Latimer predates me, and that has been pushed off on the capital improvement for as long as I can remember, for longer than I've been here, let's put it that way, that's 12 years. We've just keep going, oh, we'll get to that next, and, and it just.
Well, and it's not to say that we did a lot of other things before, because the things that were set before are just getting done now. I mean, it's just, it's such a long, the list drags, so it's, it's, it's frustrating. I would be very frustrated for.
There's a financial construct that we're working in that, you know, in our early conversations, and I think Linda Schofield attended one of the meetings talked about, you know, in an, in an effort to support this, they'll have to change the way they think about their debt policy and what, and what that looks like as well, so.
Right, right. So it's really going to be a collaborative effort with the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectment, and us at the end of the day. And then from there, it goes to the community, and they get the ultimate say at referendum.
Can I just say too, just, we are, number one, on the financial piece, all of us are taxpayers, so I just don't want the public to think that we're taking the financial and the tax implications lightly, because that affects us as much as anybody else. And then two, I just think it's worth saying, because this has come up a couple of times, the way this would be rolled out to the public, and as Neil showed in the, there would be phases in this, so you, you would have, the public would have multiple votes on this, right? You wouldn't have one vote, you, you know, you sort of wouldn't be locked in a five-school project for the next 30 years. This would come up repeatedly, so, and I like that because it gives you flexibility, right, in case you have to change it along the way. So, again, I just wanted, the public will have multiple opportunities to vote on this.
I'm sure the last answer to the survey questions, I think it was the.
The community side?
The community side page, which.
Last community question, this one? Would you support a long-range capital improve, the financial one?
Phased-in approach to mitigate tax impact.
Yeah, it's increasing your taxes.
Yep, so the phased-in approach is sort of what we, that's what we were asked to do, come up with a phased-in approach. So what you would see is, you know, in 20, with any luck, in 2021, we would have our first project out for referendum vote that May. And then we would go three or four years before we started work on the next project.
But there was no option four when this question was asked.
No.
No, okay, okay.
Option four was mislabeled, because it's really not, that was just a feedback from.
No, no, I, I.
I don't know if this is.
Phased in from an option four kind of phasing, or phased in from an option three.
From a renovate is new.
So that, that's, right, okay, I understand.
So here's perhaps another way to think about it, if it's helpful for you. Let's, let's say you had support either for option two of adding a sixth grade wing, or over the next couple of months, you decide the sixth grade, we're gonna, we're gonna renew our elementaries and Latimer Lane is first. Latimer Lane's at the front of the line. That doesn't mean that Simsbury High School's not getting some four. You've got every window on A Wing at Simsbury High School is 50 years old. The locker rooms at Simsbury High School are in desperate need of attention, so you're, you're still gonna have a half-million-dollar project to fix a locker room.
I remember the answers to that last question and the phased-in approach, and I didn't know if that was.
A maintenance.
A relationship to that.
This is called phased-in approach, or if it was option three, but phasing in the buildings. And so that was why I was uncomfortable getting rid of option four, because I wasn't sure if that's what the community was reacting to.
And to me, that really should read like maintenance.
Right, but, but no one was reacting to this option because that wasn't.
And just, just to your, just to your point about, this, this request, it was a great one, and we probably should have had it from day one, this came out of the Terriffel meeting, which was the last one, and that's why, you know, so there wasn't, wasn't trying to hide it from anybody else.
And that was, and that was, I think, I think that's an important point, Jeff. As we've rolled through each of these community meetings, we've taken what we've been told, and we've adjusted the presentation before the next community meeting, so we could get more feedback as we've gone through it, so.
It brings up points that were made previously.
Right, so I think two B was our first one, so maybe Tooten didn't, didn't see his comprehend, didn't see this same presentation, if you will, because we've added slides and we do it with each one, we've made adjustments, so the next public forum will really be the first unveiling of whatever that presentation looks like.
For everybody at the same time.
And whether they pick two B, sorry, Ryan, whether they pick two B or three or whatever they pick, probably, and we can't guarantee it, but probably, you're still going to put modules in on this, on Latimer in the interim.
Right.
So sort of four is getting done anyway.
Right.
Well.
That was kind of my thought, yeah, that's exactly.
But the modulars that, like, if we.
They could be used, once you know the direction, they could be used as part of the swing space as well.
Right, of course, yep.
So they're going to be a move, you know.
But that's also part of the plan.
I was just gonna ask for option three, renovate as new for Latimer. How do you do that with 450 kids? Like, how do you?
So some initial conversations we've had with the architect is you can build a whole new instructional wing of new classrooms that are outside of the building. When those are complete, you move kids into there, and then you start to renovate the areas that they have vacated, and you transition that way. It's similar to what we've done.
And the size gets bigger anyway.
Yeah, I know that.
What he was saying in the summer time is you address the core spaces when there's nobody here.
It would take longer because you'd need two summers to.
You need summers to address the core spaces. You need summers to address cafeterias, libraries, gyms, et cetera. And you probably picture an added-on wing that might, you know, be a two-story added-on wing to fit more classrooms on there when you go back to address the core. There's a percentage that you have to keep of the original building, but then you probably do demo a portion of the current building. Like, after you've added those classrooms and you decide we're gonna keep this particular wing, but that wing's actually gonna get destroyed and demoed, and.
And just to be clear, the only difference between option two and option three is option two moves sixth grade to Henry James.
Yes.
Everything else is the same.
And what, what Jeff Wozinski.
We have five elementaries, K5.
What Tecton would say, and looking at the demographics, from the demographics, option two gives you more immediate relief in more places. Because it also empties sixth grade classrooms out of all those other schools.
Helps you at Squadron, when Squadron's not the first building you're gonna touch.
Right, so then the need for modulars here is really more of a, well, I shouldn't say that because it's swing space, but you would, in two years, you'd be moving your sixth grade out, and it gives you even that much more breathing room.
Does Scott Baker feel about more construction at Henry James?
Best thing ever.
He's got a great Instagram.
He doesn't complain.
So how do we pull it together for tomorrow night? What are its thoughts?
I, I'd like to kind of hear if, one by one, if you guys are all good pulling off the five, six, and the maintenance, sorry, Neil, the maintenance schedule, option four.
I'm good taking option one and option four maintenance off.
Jeff?
I'm good taking both off.
Sharon?
I said the same.
I'm in same.
Great.
All right, I am.
Great, appreciate everybody's feedback on that.
So that's really helpful, I think it'll be a great meeting tomorrow night, it'll help us move things in a good direction.
Sounds good.
All right.
I will still open the meeting with, because facilities enrollment was so involved in the process here, I will give a brief update about how the neighborhood meetings went and the survey, and then probably ask Jeff to discuss what the board decided.
I think that makes sense.
Right, and I think that's a great idea, and I think that's good progress. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, so this brings us to our second public audience. So anybody who would like to speak, if you could just stand up, give us your name, your address, and you have three minutes to share your thoughts with us, okay? Yes, sorry.
Just a quick question for clarification for tomorrow night. If option one tomorrow, are you also referring to two A's off? Just wanted to check that out, because that person said three, five schools either way, but option two.
What's two A?
You'd have to show us two A.
It's five elementary schools or four elementary schools.
So it's two A, so.
So that's.
Yeah, yeah, I guess you're right.
Yeah, that would go.
At least in my mind, I mean.
So two B and.
So two B and three would be going forward.
Could it be three A and B?
Three A is keeping the districts as they currently are drawn on.
That's just not distributing the student body throughout town in any other way.
Just saying, draw, keep the district map the same. Three B is saying, redistrict neighborhoods to make schools more or less the same size, knowing you won't get it perfect.
Sarah, let me call, I live on Washington Hill Road, I'm a Latimer parent, and I think you cover a lot of the things that I was hoping to bring up tonight, but one thing I just wanted to stress was getting information out to the public about the educational key differences with having sixth grade moved, because I know talking to my friends and other parents, that is the number one thing that I hear that people aren't getting visa, that's why we move to sixth grade or not to sixth grade.
Right.
And I'm also happy to hear that you all seem very on board with giving some temporary leave to Latimer, because it is, the public's are not five years.
Right, right.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
I'll trigger on Latimer, have a Latimer too. I know the sequel time is interesting, I just have a couple of questions if possible. When you're talking about immediate relief for modular classrooms, attending classes, what that entails, are we gonna give full-time modular classrooms, or is this special home ways, is it a combination of hiring to reduce? is this special hold place, does it become a very, you know, hiring to reduce the student ratio in class? Um, options two and three, which you're keeping on the table, just clarifying, both involve redistricting, just clarifying that. And then option two, the cost includes the Latimer and the sixth grade, it's not clear if those are occurring simultaneously at construction or if those are occurring one after another and considering Latimer's needs, do you know what comes first? Thank you.
So I can tell you that Latimer and sixth grade would be bundled as a project. They would go simultaneous, like...
Go on summer or...
And also, it'd be like an 18-month, so that's a simultaneous construction project because that's the only way it makes sense for Latimer. All right?
Modulators.
When we had modulators here in the past, it was a, that's where a classroom grade lev, no, grade levels were held there.
Sixth grade.
Um, sixth grade was, was there. It, it could be looked at either way. I, we haven't really decided on that at this point.
Right. And, um, I think sometimes people picture modular classrooms as these terrible trailers.
What would be happening?
Uh, trust me, they're different, they look different nowadays. Uh, I, when I was the principal of Simsbury High School, we had modulators on the back. I had teachers fight to get in them because they really, uh, well, they offered air conditioning. That was one. But they, they really, uh, i- if you're able to, um, a- and that's an industry where sometimes you have to get ones that are already used as opposed to new modulars. So, you know, it would have to look, we would have to look at it based on how long do we think those modulators are realistically going to be there? And, and, um, you know, would work with Principal Luzzetti to decide what goes out there.
And then as far as your redistricting question...
I just wanted to confirm because the options were very well laid out. I wanted to confirm if the option two left on the table of two B and three A and three B all appeared to recall some.
Yes, because what we'd like to try to do is not have a squadron line at 7:20. You know, I, we have to, we have, we, we have to equal it out in some way to make the education more equitable throughout town and the opportunities more equitable throughout town. Okay, you're good? Yes.
I have a question. Back when there was modulators here, how did they have school-wide, wide activities before?
How did they have school-wide activities?
Like, if the gym space was small...
They didn't.
They did.
So it's, it's like Squadron isn't, isn't big enough to house a school-wide activity you have to do too. So you go primary kids, then you bring in, it was too big to do that.
That happened at a lot of schools, though.
Yeah.
So that's not, I mean, that's not, no, it's not, it's pretty much most, a lot of schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to, just divvy it up.
Divide it up, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm a Latimer parent and also, I, with the modulators were here, we did have her appropriate new skin garden, it was not at Latimer.
Yeah, right. Yes. Yeah.
But, um, I just am very happy to hear everything tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Lisa, Sharon, friend, I'm a Latimer parent in local business center. And one of them actually went to elementary school here at Latimer. And he walks through the halls and, uh, who's 17, I don't know, and he sees how much is still the same. So, um, just so excited to hear that their change was coming quickly. Um, and we moved here in 2014 and we were really attracted to the K through six model and we moved here actually just to center it for Latimer. Cute as that sounds. Strategic, not just a standard. Um, but one thing I want to add, which I'm really interested to hear more, which I think a lot of people have requested in the neighborhood, um, meetings and then here tonight, is some of the educational benefits of moving sixth grade. Um, because we, I was initially super attracted, like, with a K through six model, but now I have students, I have four kids, so I have children at high school and I have children at Henry James. And I still have one here. So by the time these changes take place, like what you're saying, like, I'm not a mom or a parent, but they're all my friends. Um, but, um, I now am, like, um, with our experience with Henry James, I, um, like, I have an opinion now on making that student body a little bit bigger. And I can get into, like, I'm curious, I have two parents who are from the James experience, but I think that, I'm seeing back at adding third grade and how that will actually affect faculty and culture of Henry James in a positive way, even though as an elementary school parent, I'm really connected to the K through six model. So if, for some of their other...
Yeah. So that'll be a big part of what we're doing moving forward now that we ne, we've narrowed this.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's huge.
Mr. Nagy.
Thank you, seven months, I'm very careful. I, I've observed that democracy, they did democracy, the messy, and, uh, I've observed that over these last few months, but I like to compliment you all in your professional, maintaining a professional attitude throughout, uh, the process, which has been easy, uh, has been gratifying for me and I'm proud of all of you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, with that, I will, uh, make mention that, again, our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, March 10th.